Borough Bloomingdale, Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Will close meeting to the order with just a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Demato?
Here.
Councilman Catalano?
Here.
Councilman Delariva?
Here.
Councilman Graziano?
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson?
Here.
Councilwoman Schuber?
Here.
Councilman Yasi?
Here.
We also have our municipal clerk, Brianna Smith, business administrator, Michael Sondemeyer, and borough attorney, Dawn Sullivan. This meeting is called to pursuant of the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January 9th, 2023. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and is on file of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. As per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge there are two emergency exits in these council chambers, the main entrance, which you enter through, and a secondary exit to the left of where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exits, exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If there's any questions, please raise your hand. We do, we don't have any presentations tonight, but we do have one not agenda item, which will be adding Lot 5105, um, Block 5105, Lot 53, to the redevelopment study on Union Ave. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to open up early public comment. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to come up, please come up.
Linda Huntley, 86 Van Damme? Under the equipment, the new vehicle, what's that for the explorer?
Under the equipment, a new vehicle. That is, um, for the, I believe it's for the assistant?
Assistant superintendent. And in his truck, it will go to one of the promotions of the laborer, I mean, of the, uh, foreman positions tonight. It's an SUV.
Basically, our plan is that our superintendent and our assistant superintendent, when we have emergencies, we don't believe, as the public safety, that they should actually be physically out plowing roads. And the reason being for that is when our employees come back from plowing, they plow for 16, 20 hours, wherever it is, we need to make sure that they're coming back safe and not going back on the road on their own. So we want our supervision to oversee that and make sure roads are getting done where they need to be done. If they have to send trucks, other than else, they need to be with their employees. So we just want to make sure, and there's no sense by them a full-size pickup truck with a plow, because that's an expense when they'll be sitting in the DPW yard doing supervisory work.
Okay, uh, the other thing I wanted to find out about was the site work for the Van Damme Brook?
Mm-hmm.
Van, damn, not Dan.
Van Damme Brook, yes. We're going-
The guys did work, and I would really appreciate that, because it does help with the flooding there, and they did that in front of tight ice. So I'm assuming it's going to include that again, that area?
Um, Mike, you could probably answer where it's going to be, but I know DNK is doing-
Yeah, we have the people that cleaned out the, uh, the retention pond on Woodlock, gave us the number, I think it was like 23,000 and change, to clean out the brook down Van Damme from, well, right, as you come out of your house to the right, where it starts there, all the way down to where it crosses over, get all the silt out that's in there. Uh, and as long as they're able to reach it from the bridge, as far as they can reach, that's okay with the DEP, uh, so that's what our engineers let us do.
But I think it will also, we go down, we go down further than before me. There's a, um, I know there are a couple of houses last time that had a lot of naxx and all that, because it was just blocked up. Now, it could have been just because it was blocked up by what, RIA, the best stopped the flowing.
The issue is they can't take the machines in there. They have to reach it from the road. That's, that's, whenever they can reach from the road, that's what they're going to clear.
Okay.
That's what they're going to clear.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? See no one, a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Report of committees? BB?
Sure. The BBYC, April 1st, um, that's when you could sign up, uh, you can sign up for cheer, football, uh, flag and mascot, um, and there'd be stake is also April 1st. I mentioned, uh, last time that Chiborough, um, is reinstating their auxiliary, uh, women's auxiliary, uh, to their, and their meeting, their first meeting is on March 22nd, which is tomorrow, at 7:00. Um, if anyone's interested, um, they could, uh, attend that. For the seniors, uh, everything's pretty much, uh, the same as far as, uh, their calendar. I, I haven't, I've been asking for the April calendar, but they're still having, uh, all the yoga and stuff in, in the, in, at the senior center, um, plus all the trips that the Golden Age Club is doing. And also, uh, for the library, uh, they're meeting, uh, they're big, of the many big fundraisers, the March 31st is for the designer, uh, handbag bingo at the Fireman's Hall. Um, the tickets are still available, but they, um, they've, I believe they sold about, uh, sold about 126 tickets, uh, so far. Uh, also, Dueling Pianos is April 22nd at Glenwood Lake. That's a, uh, big, uh, that was a really fundraiser. Uh, the Queen's Tea, uh, May 11th, uh, that's coming up, and they'll be attending the Sloan Park Festival, which is happening June 9th. And, uh, they'll also be at, um, our Bloomingdale Celebration Day on 9/23. They'll, they'll be there. And then they're also going to be doing, uh, another, uh, a big raffle, uh, for the fall, and also, uh, painting with, uh, the wine painting event, but the, that's to be determined, no date yet for that. So lots of, uh, lots of events coming up. For the library.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see, public events, April 6th, we have the Ramadan press of lighting, that's 6:30 here at Borough Hall. April 8th is the Easter Egg Hunt, 12:00 PM, Walter T. Bergen. If it is absolutely downpouring, the event is canceled. Correct?
Yes, because we do not, we do not have access to the school.
We don't have access to the school, exactly. Um, April 15th is the trout fishing contest, that is 10:00 AM at Vogue Pond. April 22nd, Little League opening day, they didn't give a time, but it's typically 9:00 AM, with a rain date of the 23rd. Um, also, I got an interesting phone call today from the Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Health, regarding my daughter's vaccinations, and they had spelled her name wrong when she had gone to one of the pharmacies. And she reminded me about the Docket app, which is available to all New Jersey state residents. So you can sign up, it's, uh, just D-O-C-K-E-T. Uh, it actually covers a number of states, but it does cover New Jersey as well. So you log in, you put in your information, and all of your vaccinations that, that are entered into the state system actually automatically come up. The nice thing is now, this is what I've learned new today, is that you can also add your children. Once you put in your children's name, everything is automatically, um, uploaded into the Docket app. So you can go to the Docket app anytime and actually review all the vaccinations and see if you're up to date on everything. So it's D-O-C-K-E-T.
I have it, I have it, it works great, it's great. If you needed an airport, if you needed, um, going anywhere and every question, I bring the cards, they accept that. So you don't have to carry your cards with you. It's a pretty easy app to do, and I can do anything.
Yeah. I've actually been using mine for a long time. I've had mine for a year, but I did not know that you could add your children in there. So that is new, uh, I think.
But that's any shots, it doesn't have to just be for COVID?
No, it's all of them. So if you get your pneumonia shot, it will note, it, it doesn't show everything, but she said it does show things like pneumonia, uh, shingles vaccine, uh, influenza, um, COVID. And then, on the children's side, she said, everything that they have gotten vaccine-wise, it should show up.
It just takes a little while for them-
It does, it actually takes a couple minutes. A few people that have signed up with me with it, uh, it took probably a good 20 minutes for the app to kind of catch up, and then it showed all your information and all your vaccines. So, a great little program.
John?
Thank you. So, uh, thank you for Sunday. We had Cone and Cops over at Mia's Ice Cream. It was sponsored by Economic Development Commission, as well as Rudge Automotive. Um, I want to say a big thank you to the mayor who was there, also the police department, um, almost all of them were there, even if they weren't working that day, and it was just a fantastic turnout. A lot of people supporting that, just having fun, getting to meet the police officers, getting free ice cream, uh, from Mia's, as well as from, from Rudge, who helped pay for that. So a very good event, uh, hopefully see more of those as time goes on. It's a nice way to spotlight certain businesses and just to bring people together. And the second item on the Drug Alliance front, so we have the Unity Through Community Dodgeball Game on 3:30, it's a Thursday, I believe it starts at 6:00 PM. Encourage all of us to go. You all get to, uh, to play in the dodgeball games, it's a lot of fun. Members usually from the fire department and the police department that are there, and it's a, it's a good event. The kids very much enjoy it, and frankly, I enjoy it too. So I hope to see you all there.
Anybody else down here? You guys ready? Mike?
Couple of things, Mayor. Uh, First Street, uh, will be paved next week. Uh, they did some gas work there over the last couple of months, PSE and G, so they're going to come pave curb to curb on that street. Uh, currently changing the curb boxes on Hilltop Terrace to our water department guys. Uh, PSE is, PSE and G is starting the gas main within the next few weeks on Hilltop Terrace, and then our contractor will follow behind with storm and sewer work. And they're shooting for a project completion up there for sometime early August. Uh, Andrews Place, they'll remobilize down there, uh, the contractor finished some concrete work, and then paved and should be finished and paved by the end of April. Uh, tennis courts are going to be starting in April as well. Uh, they're taking bids the week of April 10th for the CDBG Vow Project and the Orchard and Wallace Utilities Project. Uh, and currently, they're starting field prep, uh, to get ready for the baseball and soccer season, uh, coming up here. And then on one note, there's a planning board tomorrow that'll be talking about the master plan. Uh, and sitting and talking with the CFO, uh, we thought of, gave them an idea of putting a special emergency together to fund that master plan. That allows them to do the entire plan this year, and then we pay for it over the next five years, uh, one-fifth each year. We've done this for other things in the past, uh, where we had come up with money in the year. Comes out of surplus, and then we just replenish our surplus over the next five years. And then the last thing, uh, sitting next to me is our newest employee, that's our Amy Greenspan, uh, our new administrative assistant. She's here tonight training with Bree, uh, so when Bree's out, she'll be helping us with the council meetings. So welcome, Amy. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Amy, you have anything?
Um, good, thank you. Um, I actually just have one thing, uh, to let everyone know, that Bloomingdale hasn't had a master board worker for our elections since the passing of Nancy Dale. And the county actually reached out to me, asking if I recommended anyone, um, and I did. I, I recommended two people, but only one was interested. Um, uh, she'll, she's going to go through training, uh, but Karen Schmidt, she's been a board worker for quite a few elections, um, she was interested in it, and it's, it's a great timing, it's a great supplement to my office for the day. Some of you have seen me working as a poll worker, which is not what I'm supposed to be doing that day, but, so I think it'll be really great to have her to support Bloomingdale's elections. She, uh, the board, the master board worker acts as a liaison for the poll workers to my office during the day, so it, it, uh, I'm looking forward to having her join us on election.
She'll do well. She's involved in other counties in town, too, so she's very familiar with the process.
Yes, she's on our environmental commission, uh-
Rose Kennedy?
Yep, so she was grateful for the opportunity, I hope she sticks with it.
What?
Nothing.
Okay, um, Frank, what is the, um, the fire department for Bloomingdale Deli? They, the lunch? The lunch, yeah. Yeah, that's similar to the, um, the Coens and Cops, or the, the, the fire department's doing it with the Bloomingdale Deli to be out in front of their business and hopefully bring some people down there, so come down. I don't know, some of you saw the huge fire in West Milford on Saturday. Um, it's a good idea not to do open burning when it's very windy, um, so just be careful if anybody has fire pits in their backyards, we don't want to have a repeat of what went up over there, because they lost three homes, which is not really a good thing. So, but, and they have, they have a New Jersey up there, and New York. Okay, so before we go into the consent agenda, we do have our proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, which is April. Uh, we were contacted by Sasha Lowery, Larry, and Donna Rusnick. If you guys can just come up and talk about it a little bit. The floor is yours.
Hi, Dana, how are you? These are two of our volunteer advocates, um, and Donna has been an advocate for a little over a year.
Okay.
And I've been four years ago. And I've been with the organization almost one year. Um, so our act was to, for proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, because it is a huge issue in Passaic County. Um, over 300 kids enter the child welfare system in Passaic County each year, and our goal and our mission at Passaic County CASA is to make sure that each one of those children has a dedicated advocate who will speak up for their best interests, who, uh, will fight for them, and, and just make sure they have all the services they need. Um, we train, we recruit our advocates, we train them, and we just make sure they're ready to take on the full case, or, or the case in the Passaic County Family Court system. So, I do want to thank, uh, Mayor.
Just that, it's, it's just an amazing organization. I've, I've been part of it for four years, but I don't know how it went that long with me not knowing about the organization, CASA, because it's, it's just, the impact that we have on those children in foster care is really incredible. Um, so I have any opportunity, I have a chance to tell people about it, um, I want them to know, because I can't believe it's been in the state of New Jersey as long as it has, and it took me years to even find out what it was. So, um, so anything, you know, I can do to get the word out that this is a thing, and that it does make a difference in these children's lives.
I think what we can do is any information you have, or new information, we can put it on our borough website, so we can get the information out along with you guys. I think it's great work, um, child abuse is a, is a terrible thing. It's okay.
You know us, come on.
Yeah. So whatever we can do to support it, um, we're going to adopt a proclamation tonight to support, and it is for the month of April, so we will definitely be out there. If you need anything, I ask you to, please contact us. Um, obviously, between the, the AMF, BB responded to it, um, with this, and anybody here is, will support it on the subject.
Also, I did bring up, bring it up with the, uh, Florida trustees with the library, um, to, if there is any kind of, uh, like books or things that you use to console, or, I don't know the words, to anything, like, our library's great, and they have reading times, and, and they also, we're saying that there's this one resource that, like, they help people, uh, when they, like, like with their language difficulty, like, to get their, they, they helped a woman get her citizenship, uh, and with, like, another person in town that has time helped them study, and it took a year, and she, the person was working, doing other things, but she actually got it. So, um, our library is a great resource for any kind of things to disperse to the little, little ones, and if you guys have, like, uh, like, if you wanted to do anything, I know that the library will, will help to get up to a little-
Well, you have any posters or anything for the month of April?
I do have some posters with you, um, that I can leave, and I also did one, say, I'm not sure if this is appropriate, we are a nonprofit, and we do have two fundraising events coming up, you know, so, of course.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so the first one is actually a pickleball tournament that will be on April 22nd. I did hear that you guys have something else planned that day, but I do have to fly for it. I have no idea what pickleball is, but I think it's going to be-
It's either a giant ping pong table or a short tennis court.
Stick to the sports idea. Um, and we also have, uh, a tricky tray that's on June 5th, and that, I do know, will be a lot of fun, it's food is good, and it'll be at the West Mile Country Club, and we have a lot of free prizes, like, our office is covered in baskets, too, so.
Okay. Yeah, you can leave that with us, and then you could probably make some copies and put them down and advertise it for you.
Thank you. And Sasha, can you mail me some of that information? Okay, awesome. And actually, if you can, me and Bree would be lovely. Thanks.
I'll take, I'll take that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Resolution 2023, 3.9, to consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please? Sumo.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber? Yes. Yasi?
Yes.
Okay, um, we're going to move things around a little bit, so if you can just follow along. Thank you. We're going to go to item C. Department of Public Works, these are the hiring of our new labors, and our, in our promotions, uh, for our DPW employees, which we welcome the guys here tonight, um, for this. So can, I'm going to move the resolutions for the labors, Resolution 2023, 3.14, hinder labors through Resolution 2023.19, um, all at once. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Delariva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber? Yes. Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay, now comes the fun part. Promotions, uh, Assistant Superintendent, Resolution Number 2023, 3.20, promotion of Assistant Superintendent William Morris. Can I have a motion, please?
Sumo. Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber? Yes. Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Congratulations, though.
Congrats.
Okay, uh, we are promoting three employees to the, to the, um, to become a foreman. So it's Resolution 2023, 3.21, to Resolution Number 2023, 3.23. This would be, um, Dave Potasnik, Mike Rossi, and Tom Pepp. Okay, yeah, I'm going to move them all at once.
Sumo. Second.
Roll call, please.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber? Yes. Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're promoting three of our employees to the position of driver, Resolution 2023, 3.24, through Resolution 2023.26. Um, Rob Centonero? Delgado? Angel Delgado and Hunter Hamlin. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Schuber? Yes. Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Before we go any further, maybe we'll just take five minutes, and if you guys want to just come up and, you know, just take a few, few minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, but congratulations to all of yous. Our DPW is growing, I think it's for the positive going forward. Um, I think it's going to be a great opportunity for, um, the work we're going to have to do coming down shortly. So, fantastic.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm excited for y'all.
At all.
Recession at 6:20, 7:25. Back in at 7:31. We'll pick up from, um, pending item number 10, second final reading, public hearing, ordinance number 10, dash 2023, amended chapter four, cannabis enforcement. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies will be available to the public so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Can I have a motion to read by title?
Sumo. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough Bloomingdale County, Passaic State of New Jersey, amending chapter four, general licensing, section four dash 18.4, civil fines and penalties of the Code of the Borough Bloomingdale.
Can I have a motion, open up public hearing?
Sumo. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? See no one, can I have a motion to close?
Sumo. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments? Motion for adoption.
Sumo. Second.
Roll call.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber? Yes.
Item B, second final reading and public hearing, ordinance number 11, dash 2023, amended chapter two, dash 80, fees, vendor fees for the Borough Public Events. Can I have a public notice statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies will be available to the public so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Can I have a motion to read by title?
Sumo. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough Bloomingdale County, Passaic State of New Jersey, amending chapter two, administration, article eight, policies and procedures, section two, dash eighty, fees charged for municipal services of the Code of the Borough Bloomingdale.
Okay, can I have a motion of a public hearing?
Sumo. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? See no one, a motion to close?
Sumo. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any comments? Motion for adoption.
Sumo. Second.
Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber? Yes. Yasi?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to jump down to, uh, item three, equipment, Resolution 2023, 3.27, authorizing the purchase of two Leech Model rear loader refuse body from ESCNJ. Can I have a motion?
Sumo. Second.
Okay, any comments? Roll call, please.
Delariva?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schuber? Yes. Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution Number 2023, 3.28, authorizing the purchase of a street sweeper, one street sweeper. Can I have a motion, please?
Sumo. Second.
Okay, um, just, uh, the public, we are, we entered into a shared service agreement with Oakland, so we expanded our streets, street sweeping, um- with Oakland, so we expanded our streets, street sweeping, um, operation. So to do that, we need to buy another sweeper, which will be, um, pretty much, the new sweeper will be here, right? And the old one will be going wherever. But, um, this is also gonna be no cost to the taxpayers of, of Bloomingdale, because that's part of the shared service agreement, the way we figured it out. Can I, um, have a roll call, please?
Bradiano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Gadsby?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes. Okay. Resolution number 2023, 3 dot 29, authorizing purchase of a vehicle per state contract. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay, and as I explained before, this will go to our new assistant superintendent. Uh, as I stated before, it's pretty much for safety, and his truck will go to one of the foremans, and that truck will be on the road. Um, can, um, roll call, uh, roll call, please?
Hudson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Gadsby?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Bradiano?
Yes. Okay. New business. Adoption of resolution number 2023, 3 dot 30, payment of the bills. Can I have a motion, please?
So move. Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Hubert?
Yes.
Gadsby?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Bradiano?
Yes, but abstain with PO number 23 dash zero eight eight six four.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item B, adoption of resolution number 2023, 2023, 3 dot 31, authorizing site work for Van Dam Brook by DMK Services LLC. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any comments?
I didn't catch that, it was Van Dam. Yeah, I didn't say it before, I didn't even catch it.
Yeah.
The miller, sorry.
Yeah, there's a, I don't know if you know, there's this, a real, I wouldn't even call it a brook, that goes down, but we're gonna clean that out, and hopefully that'll help with the, uh, when we get heavy rains.
Worth complimenting our engineer, the approach here, to be able to clean out more of that brook that might have otherwise been allowed, because the adverb will be approached and the methodology it took to be able to do it, so.
Okay, very good. Roll call.
Gadsby?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Bradiano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Okay, item C, adoption of resolution number 2023, 3 dot 32, authorize a final payment release, performance bond and accepted maintenance bond for Hamilton Street to Regal Utility. Uh, do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Any comments? Everyone's happy, right? Um, I would say yes. Then, just a little history behind there, when the Regal did the paving down there, that was terrible. Right. Okay, so, he had to come back in, hire somebody, to mill it all back out at his cost, and put it all, and redo it the right way. So, and then that's where our engineer and inspector lost stuff coming in, because they're the ones who make that decision, have to go after. So, means to say he has not been at any more jobs in Bloomingdale. Roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delariva?
Yes.
Bradiano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Gadsby?
Yes. Okay, adoption of resolution 2023, 3 dot 33, authorize the cancellation of general capital ordinances. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Okay, any comments? Roll call.
Delariva?
Yes.
Bradiano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Gadsby?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes. Okay. Item E, introduction of ordinance number 12 dash 2023, amended chapter two dash 64 dot 11, fees for recreational tennis and yoga. Can I have a motion to read by title?
Sum it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale and the County of Passaic, state of New Jersey, amending chapter two, administration, section two dash 64 point 11, fees for recreation programs of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale. Second and final hearing and adoption will be scheduled for April 4th.
Okay.
Those are two new programs that-
Rick is bringing out, yeah. Very good. Okay. Resolution number 2023, 3 dot 34, issued to add to the redevelopment study Block 51 oh five, Lot 53, um, also known as a Union Ave, in the, uh, 204 Union Ave in the Borough of Blooming. Do I have a motion, please?
Sum it.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Bradiano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hubert?
Yes.
Gadsby?
Yes.
Catalano?
Just, uh, hopefully the final decision, yes.
Delariva?
Yes. Okay. Not too bad. Can I have a motion to open up late public comment?
Sum it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone wishing to come up? Good. Okay, anybody else? See no one, a motion to close. So move.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do have, um, one matter of personnel in executive session, and, and contract negotiations, but there will be no business conducted afterwards. Okay? Can I have a motion to go to executive session?
Sum it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.